Welcome everyone. Today is Monday, March 7th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM and this is the regular meeting of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Tonight, Mr. Lambert will be chairing the meeting. And Mr. Lambert, would you please read our opening statement?
Sure. So, the following meeting is being conducted by Electronic Needs in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 amended in 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices in conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines for Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note that all microphones and public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial *9 if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP-TV. So please join me now in a salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And now I will take role. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Mr. Henry is absent. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is also absent. Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Daniel Scannamayo. I believe is absent. Juanita Barnes. I believe is also absent. And Barbara Krizak is... Oh, I'm sorry. I see Juanita.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't unmute.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Juanita Barnes is present.
Irene, I think that is a... and the attendees and not a participant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I see he raised his hand. Okay, let's just one... Bear with me for one second. Okay, Daniel, can you unmute yourself? Daniel.
Yeah, hi. I'm here. I was in as a...
Great, thank you. We have you as a panelist now, so you're free to mute and unmute yourself as we go on. All right, and Barbara Krizak is absent this evening. And as I said, Mr. Rick Lambert is our chair. Mr. Lambert, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
All right, thank you. That is everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So first order of business is the approval of minutes for the February 7th regular virtual meeting. Any comments?
I move to approve them.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Gallopo?
Mike Manzella.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scannamayo. Oh, um, yes, you were here. You were present. Okay. All right. Oh, everyone else was present at that meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes from February 7th, 2022 approved.
Okay, next are the minutes from the January 25th meeting, regular virtual meeting.
And just to clarify, this is from January 25th of 2021. Just doing some... Yeah, just doing some, uh, some board cleanup matters because these minutes were never approved.
Wow.
Yeah. Who's eligible?
Everyone except for Mr. Henry, who was recused, and Trudy, which who was not here.
Not the current member, the current... The new members aren't.
The... Yes, and and the new alternate members are not eligible to vote.
So when you call the roll, please be called specific names?
I will call roll.
Thank you.
Um, any questions or comments about those minutes?
Motion to approve them.
Thank you, Mr. Manzella. And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Clayton. All right, and I'll take role for this one. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry was recused. Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
And Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes of January 25th, 2021 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our first applicant, our only application is PB 2021-16 Isabella in Charge doing business as Asbury Ale House, 531 Cookman slash 300 Emery, excuse me, Block 3104, Lot 1, CBD redevelopment area. Site plan approval to replace ground floor windows located with a garage door and counter.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the notices. They're in proper form. We have jurisdiction to proceed.
Great. Okay, the attorney for the applicant?
I may Andrew Karas from Fox Rush on behalf of the applicant, Isabella in Charge Inc. doing business as Asbury Ale House. If I may. We're here tonight with regard to an application, a site plan application in the CBD redevelopment area. The property is located at 531 Cookman Avenue, Block 3104, Lot 1. Currently there's existing the Asbury Ale House, which is an existing...
Andy, can you speak up a little bit? We're getting some... I'm getting some kind of feedback.
Some kind of noise, some kind of background noise? And you're kind of...
I didn't want...
Let me, let me do this.
Sorry, Andy. I didn't want to interrupt it, but I think that interference may be coming from Eric. Eric, do you have a speaker? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Is it better now? Can you hear me?
Yes, that's great.
Speak up a little bit?
Okay, I'll speak up. If you have an issue hearing me, just I'll try to speak up louder, but I can take my earphones off and use my computer speaker, but I prefer to have the earphones on just because I'll probably have the dog barking in the background at some point.
Okay.
All right. Again, I represent Isabella in Charge INC. It's doing business as the Asbury Ale House. We're here for property at 531 Cookman Avenue, Lot 3104, Lot 1. It's located within the CBD redevelopment area. The property is the Asbury Ale House, an existing bar and restaurant. The application tonight is for site plan approval to replace a portion of a ground floor window, which is located on the southern facade of the building. And to change it to make it a sliding, a garage operated type door and a counter to provide for access and counter service on the private patio, which exists on the property. Now, this is a Steinbeck building for which I think everybody is aware. It's one of the main buildings that we have down here in Asbury Park. It's the old department store back in 2004. Just to give a little bit of a history with regard to the building, there was a site plan approval for this building that had been vacant and boarded up for quite some period of time. The windows that are on there now and all these storefront façades that are on there had been changed pursuant to that site plan to have the glazing and the aluminum storefronts that now are existing in the building. What we're looking to do is to revise a small portion of that storefront area. It's not the original historic storefront that was on there. Again, it was changed in 2004 pursuant to approvals from this board. But to change it to make it more accessible for the use of the property owner and the operator, rather the operator of the facility, the Asbury Ale House. And I'll be calling two witnesses tonight. One will be my client, but first up, I'll have my witness Jeffrey Bell testify as to the plans that he prepared to give a description of exactly what it is that we're seeking to do with this application.
Let's, let's get Mr. Bell under oath, and then I want to get my staff under oath as well. Mr. Bell, I don't see you.
Now we do.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Uh, please state your name and your affiliation with the applicant for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Bell, and I'm the official architect for the Asbury Ale House.
Okay. Donna and Doug, are you out there?
Hi.
Yeah.
Okay, please raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Uh, please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, Clark Keaton Hens, board planner.
Thank you.
Doug Clowland, insight engineering, board engineer.
Okay, proceed, Mr. Karas.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, can you please give the board the benefit of their qualifications?
Sure. I'm licensed in six states. I've been working in my own practice since 2013. And I have never appeared in front of this board, but I've appeared in front of a number of other boards. And I'm here tonight for any questions you might have.
Are you licensed in New Jersey?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you're a licensed architect, am I correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
I would offer Mr. Bell as a professional in the area of architecture.
And yes.
I may proceed. Mr. Bell, you're familiar with the property that issued here, 531 Cookman Avenue, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were asked to prepare a plan relative to certain changes that are being proposed on the facade of this building, am I correct?
That's correct.
And do you have those plans that you can screen share with the board?
I do.
Now, can you bring those up?
Like, uh...
Sorry, just, just one second. Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I go and see?
Yeah, what I want to do is we're going to mark this as A1 for identification. Mr. Bell, is there a date on this that we can reference with regard to the marking?
Yes, we can do 1/24/22.
And that's the last revision, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so this is A1 for identification.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bell, take a look at what's marked as A1 for identification. First, I want you to take a look at the photo up on the right-hand side. Do you see that photo?
Yes.
And can you please describe where that is and what that is depicting?
That's on the southwest corner of the building on Cookman. That's the existing storefront glazing and aluminum panels, and there's some black panels and an awning.
All right, and I think existing conditions on the building, am I correct?
That's correct.
And in front of that, in the corner of the building, is a patio area, am I correct?
That's correct.
And that seating, are you familiar with who that seating is utilized by? Is that by the Asbury Ale House?
That's correct.
As part of their property?
Yes.
Let's go through what the proposed plan is for this site. Can you define it?
So this section of glazing is to be replaced with an overhead type door that will also have glazing. So you'd be able to see through it, and it would be able to then open up and provide access to a bar top here, and then be able to, like, this would be open to the inside.
And that new wall would remain, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, why don't you go through the measurements and the operation of that proposed doorway?
So the garage door itself, or I should call it overhead door because there's no garage involved. The overhead door is four feet tall by the width of the existing opening. And it would open up almost straight onto a bit of an angle out of the way when opened. And then when closed, there's a gasket at the bottom that would prevent air and water from coming into the building.
Okay, so it's not a roll top door. It's one that goes vertically up onto the building, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right.
The panels, panel segments are hinged to allow for the door to be able to get lifted out of the out of the opening.
All right, if we can go up to that photograph again. As we look at that photograph, there's a lot of masonry around that area where you have the glazing, am I correct?
That's correct.
Is any of that masonry going to be touched or altered based upon this proposed plan?
No, sir.
All right, so that'll remain untouched. It's only that one area is described in your depiction. If we can go down a little bit. That is going to be altered, am I correct?
That's true.
All right, and the countertop, what's the measurement of the countertop that you're going to have over there?
It'll be approximately two feet, four inches wide by the width of the opening.
And that'll provide access to the interior, the premises for the employees to utilize, am I correct?
That's correct.
And provide access to provide service to the exterior where those tables are, am I correct?
Correct.
As opposed to people having to go walk to the front door and then go through the front door to provide service, am I correct?
That's correct.
What I want to do is I want to go through with you some of the comments from some of the reports that were issued in this matter. You're familiar with those reports?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what I'd like to do is go through first the report from CCH dated March 3rd, 2022. If we can have that marked.
Yeah, let's mark it B1. This has been marked A1?
The plan is A1.
I'm seeing. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
What I want to do, Mr. Bell, is go through some of the comments that we have in this report.
Okay.
The first thing I want to do is go to 1.5 where it has in the details of the proposal. It makes mention of a roll-up garage encounter. The door that we are proposing is not a roll-type door, am I correct?
Um, yes, that's correct.
Okay, it's a flat door that raises up in accordance with what you described in the drawing, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right. Going to the historic and page three, 10.0 Historic Preservation Standards. It makes mention of the UEZ Design Guidelines, and you're familiar with some of those guidelines, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, but we're not touching any of the historical existing elements on this building. The only thing that is being replaced is the glazing. Portion of the glazing that was installed.
Why don't we let the witness testify?
Okay, is any of the historic elements of the building being altered?
No, sir.
And what's the limitations of what is being changed again with regard to this building and this proposal?
We are only proposing to change what was inside of that existing opening that you see on the image on the top right. If you see my cursor, it would be from this header to this sill. This section would be changed out and would then become a glazed operable overhead door.
Okay. The use of the, the existing use is not going to be altered in terms of it being a restaurant and bar, am I correct?
That's correct.
That'll remain the same?
Yes.
Okay. If we go to page five. Well, sorry, go to page six. There is a comment at the top in bold where it makes mention of utilizing a vertically oriented sliding or a bifold window panel instead of a roll-up garage door. Again, this panel that is being proposed is more of a folding panel. It lifts up as opposed to a garage door, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so it's more, what is being proposed is actually consistent, relatively consistent with what we have in that report, am I correct?
Correct.
What I'd like you to do now is take a look at what's, what has been received, the insight report from March 3rd, 2022. And if we can mark it.
B2?
B2, that is correct.
Yes, sir.
Take a look at what's been marked too. What I'm going to do is have you go through a few sections. If we can go on to page two. There's a comment there with regard to whether any improvements are being proposed in the right of way. Comment number three. Am I correct that there are no proposed improvements to the right of way? This is simply within the facade of that building where those windows are, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, what about with regards to the existing downside destroyers locations? Is there, based upon what you're proposing, will there be any change to that?
No, sir.
Lighting, is any additional lighting or any changes to the lighting being proposed?
No, sir.
Number six, is any signage or any additional or change signage being proposed?
No.
Okay, number seven, it says your architectural plan contained, no consent block, no issue with that. Um, architectural plan shall contain the appropriate certification blocks for approval, no issue with that, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right. Number nine is asking that the, there be testimony which demonstrates the architectural elements chosen during construction aesthetically pleasing, compatible with others providing the immediate redevelopment area. Taking a look at the windows that are being proposed, the divided windows. Is that consistent with what you see in the area having divided windows like this and within the redevelopment area?
Yes, it's common.
With regard to operations, I'm going to have my client testify to that. Those are all the questions I have of this witness. If anybody has any questions.
Uh, do you and the board have any questions? Or comments?
Yeah, John Moore, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, we keep saying the width, just put on the record the width.
It's about, it's approximately 14 feet.
Okay, then scroll up to the picture on the top right, please. Okay, so the first knee panel to the left looks like it has electrical out there. All that will remain? Right there?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. The pictures that I'm looking at, is that's how it is now, right? That's what it looks like now? That's what I'm looking at these... Now, what, what's the advantage of the panel going up over the front facade of the building as opposed to a rollback garage type of door?
When this, when this is up, it'll be on the interior of the building. So it'll, when it goes up, it, it won't be visible from the exterior.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was going to be in front of the facade.
No, it opens, it opens behind and then you wouldn't see it.
Okay.
And it opens up instead of back for clearance issues on the interior.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, this is Rick. I, I have a commenter issue. So in the photograph, you see the glazing, the vertical, the, the mullions of the glazing are aligned with the panels above and below. Yet the proposed overhead door, there's a, they don't align like they're, they're offset. Is there some way that to could, to get that same continuity with the, with the overhead door so that the, they line up with the, the panel, the vertical elements of the panel at the top and the bottom?
I don't believe there is. It's a manufacturing issue. Um, this is more or less the way that these are, are made. Um, the glazing and the metal parts will match what's existing. But the, as far as the divisions go, that's, you don't have much choice when you go to select these kind of doors.
So, so why don't you change the bottom panel to, to match the mullions there then? You could change the bottom panel, panels so the verticals will match the garage door.
That's, that's true. If the board recommends that we have that aligned, that's something that we can do.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim. I think that's a, uh, it's just, you know, there, there should, there should be some continuity in the, uh, in the, all, all the vertical elements. I, I, that's just kind of how I, my opinion about it.
Did... Uh, this is Eric Gallopo speaking. Um, did, when you were investigating, did you look at things that slid open? Like, or folded open left to right rather than up and down?
I, I, I did, but they propose, they come with a series of other elements that are undesirable. So with, with that type of door, there's a potential hazard for people to get their fingers like stuck in the divisions if they were to go ahead and, and touch it. And also when it's open, they, there's nowhere for them to nest unless you build something to, to block it. So then we'd be adding more construction to try and conceal the doors when open. And they also don't do as good of a job when closed, keeping rain and water out. So I try to stay away from those kinds of, of configurations for those reasons.
Yeah, I, I had said to modify the bottom panel, but I guess the top panel is the same, right?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, yeah, the top and, and bottom could both be modified to match the divisions of the, of the proposed overhead door.
So now, right behind there in, in the ale house, that's a table area, right?
It's, behind there is a, is a bar area.
There's not just tables. So, so that will be like, what, a service? What is that for? Is that for customers to walk up to this counter or for the outdoor waiters to walk up to the counter?
I think it would be a mix. Correct me if I'm wrong, if the operator wants to correct me. But I believe it would be maybe a small waitress section and there would be a bar, a bar top for people to go and order, and they could sit there.
Good.
We're going to have the owner, he'll be able to testify and clarify that for you.
Um, how, how far is the counter going to extend out from the building?
10 inches. Will there be any seating at the, the counter or is it just for, just to walk up and collect whatever?
I believe, I believe they do have a plan on having seating, which is consistent with how, how it's used now. There's tables and chairs out there. There's, would most likely be a row of seats here.
Again, my client will testify. He'll be able to clarify that.
When you, when you say the counter will extend out 10 inches, so what, it goes past the masonry, the, the masonry on the side?
That's correct. If you turn your attention to the exterior cross-section on the right side of the drawing, we have it going 10 inches past the storefront, which would end up being about four inches past the masonry at its thickest location, at its thickest part. So it won't stick more than a few inches past where the building like flares out at the bottom.
Okay.
Jeff, can you clarify? So when we're looking at the exterior cross-section, the left side... Jeff, can you clarify, so when we're looking at the exterior cross section, the left side of that. Vertical line is the outside of the building, am I correct?
That's correct.
And the right side is the inside showing how it goes up and hidden away, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And my understanding is when the when when the the door folds up. It doesn't block the the masonry cornice, right, of the?
That's correct, it would open up and live in the interior of the space.
Uh, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Um, okay, open up to the public.
How about staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, staff, sorry, Donna.
Hi. Uh, Donna Miller, um, so I I did have a question about. The the date of that photograph, um, do you happen to know?
I took this myself when I was there, it was probably. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one.
Before they really did that?
Before, yeah, before all that, yep.
Okay, and then, um. So what you've described is not that the panels roll. It's more of a swing up, I guess?
Uh, yeah, there's no actual rolling, it kind of um, just goes up and on an angle out of the way.
Each. Um. Horizontal element is hinged so it can flex.
That's correct.
I see, okay, so very similar to a standard garage door.
Exactly.
Except because it's so short, it doesn't have as far to go.
Right.
But it the mechanism that makes it move is roller.
That's correct.
Is it is it manual or will it be automatic, uh, electric?
Um, they can be, it can be either one, I think we're gonna have a motor. If I'm not mistaken, but it could be manual too, because it's um, counterbalanced, so it could be lifted out easily by hand.
And what so what occupies? Uh. The space inside the building behind these columns?
Oh, my client will test.
I'm I'm just curious, what uh, is that actually a void, is it solid?
Andy indicated that uh, his client will testify to that.
Well, he's the architect, he's.
He doesn't know, he's he's saying somebody else can answer your question.
Well, the architect testified that he couldn't use a different type of door or window because there wasn't the space inside.
Well, I thought you were talking about the use of the inside of the building.
I I just.
Oh, I apologize.
The space, like what's what's actually there, is it open, is it a solid, is it a void, is it sticked out in?
I believe it's open.
Okay. So then. When I look at the overhead view. On the plan of the countertop with the door. Uh. Right, that's the overhead view?
Yes.
Okay, where where? Where are the walls in relationship to this?
So this this hatched area indicates would would indicate the adjacent walls.
Right, okay. So, and and that's the thickness or whatever, there's nothing that protrudes.
That's correct.
By the building, okay, so. There is nothing to keep a. Folding style window, it could just fold back flat against that flat wall on the interior.
It could.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
If it did, we would we would then see. Um, like the sides of that door, the accordion style, do you mean?
Well, you know, they've hinged them a bunch of different ways, or they bypass slide, or you know, there's. I mean, I had a, anyway, um. But the point is. There is nothing on the interior to obstruct it from folding in.
That's correct.
Jeff, do they mean folding in towards the bar area, like up?
No, on the on the sides, behind those, behind the columns.
Behind the columns on the interior of our space is the HVAC units.
Who's talking? Who's talking? Who who is speaking?
Oh, I apologize, this is Matt Lacy, owner of Asbury House.
No, 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 you're not under oath, no, no.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And we're just talking again from the architectural perspective, so I'm trying to lay out based on what the architect has testified to as to how he designed it and why.
Andy, you're muted, by the way.
Sorry, Matt, I'll testify a little bit, well, help me.
That I was saying so much without anybody interrupting. Um, so then, uh, the other thing you testified was, um, the bottom of the panel would have a gasket basically so that it would be weatherproof.
That's correct.
Also have some sort of locking mechanism, is that on the on the ends or in the middle?
Uh, would be on the ends on the left and right, there's there could be a uh, a simple manual operation to lock it.
Okay, so not something that not like a bar across the middle, like for the garage?
No, no, no.
Uh, alright, hang on, let me just uh, jump back over here.
Do you have something more, Donna, that you're gonna?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to scroll back to the another page of my report.
Okay.
Just. We're ahead made a note. Right, and that's the other thing, okay. Um, and do you know if um, it's the intent to keep the awning?
We would have to, I would defer to the owners for that.
But as you've designed it, it could still accommodate the awning?
Oh, yes, yeah, it could stay or go.
Okay. Okay, uh, uh, that's um. That's it for me for now.
Okay, is is there a um, anyone from the engineering? Have any comments or questions?
I I just had a quick point of clarification and I, you know, I hate to beat a dead horse, but there was some discussion about uh, the countertop extending. A few inches past the the facade of the building, I just wanted to confirm that. It is not located in the public right of way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, but that's it, that's it for me.
Okay, um, now we'll open it up to the public for questions of this witness. Do we have anyone, Irene?
I, um, yes, I have hands raised and and just for the public attendees, if you would like to ask questions of this witness only. And questions only at this time, not comments, comments will be at the end of all presentations. Um, please raise your hand using the raise hand button or dial uh, on your phone star night. Um, so the first person I will call is Alyssa Bennett. Please go ahead and and ask your questions, Miss Bennett.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes, hi.
Good evening, um, this is Jack Serbikova, the board attorney, I cannot see you, so we'll just have to. Do this verbally, you when you give us your name and your address, please, when you're asking before you ask the questions, I appreciate that.
My name is Alyssa Bennett. And I live at six oh one Madison Avenue, um, the post building across the street from the ale house.
Great, thank you.
I had, um. Some uh, comments, but my concern just initially is what is the anticipated increased crowding in the area? When this change is made to the building's facade? And also what is going to be done for crowd control if there's a need for it on a busy weekend? To make sure that pedestrians can walk by and also that uh, there's some type of control of the noise. That will be more likely to occur with an open window than when the window is closed. For the community.
The owner will be is going to be testifying, um, he may be best suited to respond to those questions.
Yeah, okay, that they're valid questions, uh, Ms. Bennett, but I think that the the proprietor who's going to be operating. The business would have the answers for you for those versus the architect.
Okay, I will hold my comments until then.
Yeah, well, we'll get you back on, we'll get you back in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bennett. And uh, the next hand I have raised is Mr. Robert Weiner. Please go ahead and state your name, address and ask your questions. Mr. Weiner, are you there? You have been given permission to to speak. Are you able to? Unmute yourself?
Mr. Weiner, are you there? He looks like he's unmuted.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Weiner, you are unmuted, are you having?
Do you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can, there you go.
Uh, Robert Weiner, six oh one Madison Avenue, the post building, I'm looking at the picture that was presented and it looks nothing like the picture or what the actual. Uh. Outside looks like right now, there is fencing all around it, so it's very deceptive to show this. And say this is what it looks like, it doesn't look anything like this right now. So I wonder why this picture is used when it's obviously nothing what it looks like right now.
The the picture is utilized to depict the window. To show what the window is and where the revisions are going to be made, proposed revisions onto the building.
Okay, I just thought that when you're proposing that, you should have a an idea of what the entire. Uh, situation looks like, if we say that you don't need that right now, then I'll wait and so.
Now, I I I'll be honest with you, this, the plans go through during the whole process, a lot of different revisions. Um, so the original picture that was put on there was when the original plans were prepared. And then there were numerous revisions to the plans as we go through the process to get to the board. That picture didn't change though, that was the one that was taken at that time, and then the revisions were made over the course of a period of time to the plans. So I understand what you're saying, um, but if you have questions and want clarification as to what is out there now, I'll have the owner testify just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiner, do you have any other questions? Alright, and I do not show. Thank you, um, and I do not show any other um, hands raised.
Okay, this uh, this is Rick, I I have a question, is there, so I know the the current uh. Situation for that area, it is fenced, is there any kind of uh? Capacity limit that's set for that, I know it's. An outside space, but is there? Uh, any kind of limit on the number of people that can go into that area?
I'll have the owner testify, but I can tell you that when you utilize outdoor space with an A with a liquor license, that. There are limitations um, that are imposed to have to notify the ABC. Um, in terms of how the space is going to be utilized, but I'll have the owner testify to that.
Okay, alright, thanks. Um, so I guess call your next witness, uh, Mr. Karas.
Matt, John?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, can you go on to video so we can see you? There we go, alright.
Okay, sir, please raise your right hand. You solemn swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell it for the record and your affiliation with the application.
Uh, Matthew Gullace, M A T T H E W. G U L L A C E, and I'm the owner of Asbury House.
G U L L A C E?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, Matt, I just want to go.
Oh, I didn't, I did, did I swear you in it, I just asked you to, yeah, I did, okay.
Just for a minute.
Alright, good, now I'm just, I'm writing and thinking at the same time, which is difficult for somebody of my advanced age. Sorry about that.
I won't comment on that.
Okay.
Matt, I just want to go through some of the operations of how the premise is going to work.
Just lost Andy.
Okay, let's get him back. Andy, you there?
Uh, he, let's give him a minute to.
Okay.
To hop back on, he lost connection. Okay, he is back.
Can you hear me now?
Welcome back, Mr. Karas.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I don't know what happened, it just cut me off.
Okay, let's start over.
Alright, Matt, you still there?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, can we go over a little bit the number one, the amount of people that are outside, whether or not that is going to change at all? How the area currently looks in terms of this uh, tables and also any fencing that's around there and the operations with the window. Um, and how it's going to work within the entire site, please go on.
Sure, well, first and foremost, uh, I'd like to thank everyone for being on this call with us tonight, I appreciate all of you guys uh, doing this, um. First and foremost, the the main reason uh, that we're looking to do this is because. The street is going to be taken away, which was a huge asset to us the last two years, um. There are still a lot of COVID protocols out there, and the main thing, Andy, the reason we want to do this is one, because when the open windows will. You know, be open, uh, air circulation makes people feel safer, um, it also helps with that indoor outdoor feel of us losing all of those seats on the street. Uh, the summer for us, believe it or not, on Cookman Avenue isn't our most lucrative time, um. The beach bars obviously take a lot of our business, people don't want to be inside, so we appreciate the town so much for the last two seasons giving us the street, it was, you know, huge benefit to us during a very hard time. Um, so we're just trying to get that um, atmosphere back in the interior to try to maybe draw some customers inside. Uh, to feel that indoor outdoor feel, Andy, as well as the air circulation for safety, as we said, um. But the main goal right now is to have outdoor seating out there, we don't have a capacity limit currently on that that I'm aware of, uh, if someone in town. Says otherwise, we'd obviously abide by it, but we haven't been given one, uh, it's just the cafe license, um. For both sides, uh, and then there was a designated area that we had to have the guests in, um. Previously, Andy, we had ropes in that area. But I built a wall there right on the curb to give a clear pathway for the guests to walk through, so they weren't bothered, customers on the interior. Uh, which is why we put that wall around that exterior to help to pass through and help guests to not be bothered, um. I'm sorry, guests not to bother pedestrian walkway, uh, which I think is important, especially if this is approved, because it'll keep keep people in that area. Um, it will also have security on there, um, anytime that it's open, uh, to make sure people are flowing in and out correctly and leaving that pedestrian walkway available for them, um.
I just want to confirm that patio area where that wall is, that is not public space, am I correct?
Correct, that is our cafe area. Except our license.
How far does the sidewalk, this the city sidewalk extend that is public right? In from the curb, you talk, walk along Cookman to the corner of Emery and Cookman, they walk by this section, correct?
Correct, so our line stops right where the um, pedestrian walkway is, and I believe the pedestrian walkway, I could be wrong, I believe it's four feet wide. And then there is a mark in the cement that we have to be behind, and our wall is directly behind that line. Um, we're not over it because we can't be, so we actually came in about an inch closer than we should, so that there was no discrepancies bothering that pedestrian walkway.
Is there a wall along Emery?
There is. Yes, there is, the entire thing except the exit and entrance uh, is walled off to keep the guest in. And we will keep security at that exit and entrance to make sure people are not just flowing in and out, that we're controlling.
And as part of your sidewalk uh, permit process, there's no limitation on patrons in that area?
I believe there is an outdoor capacity, like I said, they would be better from the town, um. I just don't want to give the incorrect number, I believe it's a hundred and twenty guests, but I I don't, I'm not sure.
There is a site photo that shows the fence in our package, the wall.
Jeff, do you have any 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 more, um? That you're gonna have the applicant say, Mr. Karas, or?
Yeah, I just want to go through, in terms of noise, um, just to ensure that you're not interfering with neighbors, so how is noise going to be controlled in that area?
So we're. we're going to abide by the city ordinances, so we won't have any entertainment or anything like that past the times that we're required to have so. And then anytime if we do have entertainment, which we do on Fridays and Saturdays, that window will not be open. We do not want to disturb the community. We do not want to disturb the guests. So anytime that like I said, entertainment does go on at night, that door will be secured and shut.
And you'll agree to that as a condition, should this application be approved? Am I correct?
100%. We do not want to disturb the community in any way. We want to make sure that everyone is happy, both sides, so.
And in terms of the capacity out there, number one, check with the ABC in terms of whether or not they limit the capacity. Guess from prior experience with that. And, but you're not going to increase from what it is. It's going to be the same as existing in terms of operations in that area on the patio. The proposed opening there will not serve to increase that capacity in that patio, am I correct?
Oh, no. If anything, it would probably decrease it because I can't have tables in that area anymore. So we're probably going to lose an entire row of tables there. We'll have some chairs there, but like I said, it's only or like Jeff said earlier, it's only a 10-inch overhang. So people aren't really going to be able to sit and eat there. So we're actually losing that space to hope to gain the feel of being outside, inside, interior. So hopefully, all the guests that are in that whole area get the breeze and that's good enough to feel like they're outside.
That's all the questions I have for this witness.
Does the board have any questions or comments? They're professionals? All right, then I guess we'll open it to the public to question this witness.
Hey, Rick, I'm sorry, John Moore.
Sure, John.
When you have, on Friday and Saturdays, when you have live entertainment, it will be closed. So what are the hours of operation the other five days? How late will this be open?
So we only have entertainment on Friday and Saturday. I don't anticipate being open. Well, we're only open Sunday to Thursday until midnight. Currently, we're making a decision whether it's going to be worth in the summer to extend our hours. We haven't decided as a team yet. But it's been difficult to staff and, you know, there's been some challenges for us. So as of right now, it's midnight. If the town, Andy, feels that we should have a certain time on it, we'd be willing to discuss that and, you know, be agreed upon with the town. Because like I said, it's about the community as well. So Mayor, if you decide that there's a time that you think fair for everyone, we would be willing to work, work through that as well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, let's move it to the public. Do you have any questions from the public arena?
I do. I have two hands raised and Ms. Bennett, I'm going to unmute you again.
Sure.
Thank you very much. And thanks for hearing my concerns and comments. I appreciate it. As a resident of the Post Building who had a patio or deck on the Emery and Bang side, I can say that I have unfortunately had to file multiple complaints for noise.
Ms. Bennett, excuse the interruption. This is question time. You'll get a chance to comment in general for or against and your other concerns, but yeah. Your questions should be directed to the witness based on the testimony or questions you have from him or of him.
Okay, I was just trying to explain why I have these questions of the owner of the alehouse. Because of these prior concerns, I am very concerned about having additional. I hear that there's not going to be additional people, but I always find that an outdoor area does bring in more people especially with the COVID situation. My question is how the town is going to handle making sure that there isn't an overflow of people in that area? Limiting pedestrians sprawling out onto the pedestrian walkway and living, limiting the ability of people to walk through and also, you know, causing a little more of a risk with congestion in the area. And I appreciate that there'll be some the windows will be kept down when there's performances. But there is general noise coming through. I'm wondering will there be a timeline of when those windows have come down? I believe that the town has a time ordinance of 10 o'clock, but might be 11, not sure what it is. And will the windows be brought down at that time to make sure that the noise is within the restricted community?
I believe that's a question for the board.
Yeah, the witness indicated that he would be willing to talk to the city about different closure times, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday. So those are, that's something that the board can address with the applicant to address your concerns.
Just to speak on that, I can't speak for the town, but what I can say is that we have done. I know you have concerns in the past, and I think since your concerns, we have tried to remedy the situations for the town and for that post building. No longer have a smoking section outside. No one is allowed to hang out in front and smoke to cause noise. For everyone, they must leave our property. We've had a police officer that's been hired Friday and Saturday. We do not allow anyone, even though we do have a cafe permit, to be outside during this time on the weekends after 10 o'clock to hold alcohol there. So there's less time for them to go outside. We don't allow, or we keep them all within the building. We no longer open our doors like we did in the past, so the doors are constantly closed and security now IDs from the interior as opposed to the street like they used to. So there's been less of a line and more people coming in on the weekends. In regards to the town, ma'am, whatever they decide and whatever they feel is best for us, we will abide by, and we will make sure to do right for everyone.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay, and next hand raised is Mr. Weiner. Go ahead and speak.
Okay, I'll try. You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. A question about the counter. Are you going to allow walk-up purchases at that counter? Are people going to be allowed to walk up and buy liquor?
Um.
Hmm, big question for us.
So I'm not sure the answer on that yet because there would have to be some things we would have to do on the interior space, which Jeff can attest to, to make that happen. I don't know if we're going to do walk-up or if we're just have people be able to get area and servers only grab pickup from there. We haven't made that decision yet, but if that window is open, it would help the exterior servers from having to take the wall. We have a very large space inside. And for them to walk into the back service area is almost, you know, 100 yards when it comes from the outside all the way to the back of the restaurant. So we're trying to, you know, limit that long trip and the waiting for the guests. So we would probably have the servers pick up their food and their drinks from that area and try to keep the guests from really blocking it because that's where we would want to get the pickup to get it to the guests that are seated and hanging out in that area. However, that doesn't mean in the future that we might have people go up and grab items from there. We're just not sure yet how it's going to work for the business.
Well, I think it's important for us, for the town, for the people who live here to find out whether there's going to be long lines of people lined up to get drinks there, and it creates a lot more noise and talking and things like that. So I think we need an answer for that, not a maybe on that.
Well, there definitely won't be, there definitely won't be an ability for long lines because we would never hold the line into the space. There also is going to be exterior tables, like just like there are now all the way around it. So they would be backing into tables. So we would never allow too many people into that space to bother the guest that is seated. So even if we did allow people to sit at that counter or stand at that counter, it would only be able to be 14 to 15 people because the other people would be seated. And we wouldn't want to disturb the guests and have them backing into them as they're seated eating. So security would never allow a line to form or congeal in that area, to answer your question.
All right, I have another question. And I may be wrong on this, but are you aware that amplified music is not allowed in the town? Because I've had issues with the alehouse with a very loud singer amplified music, and we've had to call the police to shut them down. So I wonder if you're aware of the restrictions that the town has on amplified music?
I don't. Go ahead. I'm not aware of, you can have amplified music inside.
Well, wait, I got, inside, absolutely. I'm talking about outside. I'm talking about outside, which was constantly.
There is, there are ordinances that are in effect with regard to sound that my client will abide by.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to crawl all the time. And just one other question. I mean, you're very lucky inside, the crowd noise is unbelievable and the music is unbelievable. So it's very noisy inside. The building is well soundproofed, so we never hear it on the outside. My concern is now that when that window opens, are all the sounds from the inside going to come flowing out into that area? That's a concern I have.
Well, as I stated, the only sound that it would be would be guests talking because anytime any entertainment, we're going to shut that counter to make it to respect the community. So in the summer, we have people out there speaking as well and talk, eating and enjoying themselves. I don't anticipate it being any louder than that. We're going to close it if there's any interior music so that you're not disturbed outside.
And we've agreed to that, and we've agreed to that as.
Yeah, let me just make sure I understand that because I got to write that down as a condition, which I'm sure will be imposed. Matt, and for Mr. Weiner's benefit and the board. Anytime that window is open, there won't be any, any live music?
Correct. There will be no live entertainment on the interior if that window is open.
I'm not only talking about live music, I'm talking about the recorded music that blares through the, the, the inside.
Well, we have exterior speakers on our building and we turn them off as 10 o'clock town's request, which we are allowed to do. We have speakers on the exterior of the building for the guests outside as well. We turn them off at 10:00 and we don't play them at all. We only play them in the summer until 10:00 PM, as per the ordinance that we were given by last year.
Okay. All right, Matt, thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. And I have one last hand raised. Donna David, go ahead and ask your question.
Before she answers. This is Tom Freudheim. I'm on my wife's computer. I'm a resident of 601 Bangs.
Okay, can you please spell your name for us?
Sure. F R E U D, as in David. E N H E I M.
Great, thank you, thank you.
And I am a I live around the corner and I have a lot of concern about the noise. You mentioned before that you've been keeping the doors closed in order to stop the noise from coming out, but now you're going to have a window wide open, the width of the entire corner. And I don't see how, and I assume that this won't be insulated. These new windows won't have the same sound insulation that the old ones are that are built in because they're obviously they're going to have air, you know, they'll be on tracks and they won't be sealed on the sides or on the bottom might have a little bit of rubber. So there'll be a lot, even with the window closed, there'll be a lot of noise coming through this new open, when, you know, through the openings of this. And how can you are you, how can you assure us that it won't be louder with this window than it is already?
So when I meant, or to the when the doors are shut, so when our entertainment starts on the weekend, we close the doors. And this window would also be closed to remedy that noise, which is what I stated earlier. Currently, the doors are only open prior to entertainment going on. Anytime entertainment starts, we shut the doors for the guests. And this will also be sealed. And I believe from what the, I mean, Jeff could attest to this or Andy, but he told me that it would have the same soundproofing as the current windows in there. It's going to be completely sealed on the track. Is that not correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
So like I said, it will, it will have the same exact soundproofing that the current window has. And anytime there's entertainment, just like there is now, we will close the doors and that door to help with the sound. So you guys are not hearing anything on the interior when entertainment is on.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you, everyone. I do not show any other hands raised.
Motion to close? Mr. Chairman?
May I give a motion to close?
Second.
Thank you. Public, um, public questions closed.
Now, we, I need a motion to open for public comment?
So moved.
I have a motion by, by Mr. Scannamale, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment period open. So everyone in the in the public audience, please raise your hand or dial star nine if you would like to make a comment. You will have three minutes to share your comments. I will put a timer on the wind, on the screen. I'm sorry. The timer will go off at three minutes, at which time I will tell you that you're going to be muted. Okay, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry. And Mr. Serpico will will swear you in before you will begin to speak. Okay, so I see only one hand raised and it is Ms. Mrs. Bennett.
Okay, Mrs. Bennett or Ms. Bennett?
Um, my husband, actually Mike Bennett, has a comment, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Sure, okay.
Just one, just one moment, Mr. Serpico is going to swear you in and then please wait for me to start the clock before you start speaking.
Mr. Bennett, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I cannot see you, but I will take your word for it if you tell me that you raised your right hand. I've raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as far as you can tell or see? I'm sorry.
I do.
Okay, thank you. And please state your name for the record and your address, and then you can proceed to make your comments.
Okay, my name is Michael Bennett. I live at 601 Madison Avenue. And my concern is
Go ahead.
that the, there's, we experienced a lot of noise coming from the alehouse. And it seems that this will only exacerbate it. And it's, I understand that the windows are closed and all that. But a lot of the noise is from their patrons hanging out on the street, especially on Emery and yelling between 10:00 and 3:00, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, screaming and nothing is done by it, about it by, you know, the staff of the alehouse or anybody else. And we constantly have called the police about this and made, you know, complaints. And every other bar in town, you go to the, you know, you go to the Beer Garden, they don't have people and they're drinking just as much as anywhere else. And they don't have people, you know, that going on the street because they police it and they do something about it. And the alehouse is, seems to me, has done nothing. And to approve more open air and more annoyed, potential noise, doesn't seem the best interest of this town. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennett. And I I do not show any other hands raised. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Oh, there, okay, I'm sorry. Hi, Bennett, did you want to also make a comment?
Yes, I really do. I just want to say that every other restaurant bar in town seems to during COVID.
Yeah, you didn't let me swear you in.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, yes. Are we going to restart the clock?
Yes, for Ms. Bennett, yeah, she gets three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
I assume you have done so.
I have.
Okay, thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and please, once again, restate your name and tell us that you live in the Post Building.
I live at the Post Building. My name is Alisa Bennett, and truthfully, I love divvying down here. I don't mind some noise. That's why I moved down here to be around everything. So it's just the noise that happens in the wee hours of the morning. People screaming and yelling and fighting with each other after they drank a little too much. And you have to call the police and have them come and move them along, which seems unfair to the police. If this establishment seemed to care about the community as the other establishments, Pascal's, Bonnie Reed, Barrio, Rayla, Black Swan, no issues with these establishments. They're all are bars, they're all are restaurants. But they care about the community and they try to make sure that they live as good neighbors. That's my experience. An example is, I was walking, I'm a nurse, and I was walking down the street. A man fell in front of me because of the green carpet that, the green rug that was on the sidewalk in front of the alehouse that they placed there probably to cover something. Maybe wires or something. I went up to the person at the door and I said, you have a loose rug, it is a fall risk. Can you tell somebody, maybe they can pull it up or re- It is a fall risk. Can you tell somebody, maybe they can pull it up or reattach it? And the person told me they know about it and they don't care. They're not going to do anything about it. It's that attitude, that indifference. It's the crowning there during the pandemic during COVID. Everybody else was trying to keep distance. Everybody else was trying to follow the regulations with masks, but not the alehouse. Everybody was on top of each other. Nobody had masks on. You know, it really, it's really disheartening, Matt. I, I, I really want your business to do great. I'm glad you're doing great. I totally want to support you and your business as I support the other businesses, but I really feel you, you need to care a little bit more about how your business impacts people in the area. It's not that we don't want you here. We want you here. We want you to do well. We, we want you to be a good neighbor and care about the wellbeing of the people in the community, the pedestrians, your neighbors and not just your business. And that, that's my feeling. And I just, thank you for letting me share it.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay, anyone else that would like to comment? I do not show any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, can I give a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public comment closed.
Okay.
Okay, so can we have some discussion amongst the board members regarding this application?
Sure, Dan. So I have, I have no problem with the design elements. If the top panel and the bottom panel are, you know, adjusted, so we have that vertical continuation. But what I am troubled with is, first of all, it might, it's my understanding that's a seating area, right? So there's tables, people don't stand there. What I'm concerned about is we should have a condition about how many stools will be at that bar, right? Because if they are going to have people, you know, if it's not just for the servers, but it's for people to sit there and get drinks, then we don't want, you know, three rows of people standing behind them. And I heard Matt saying, you know, he'll make sure it's not going to happen and stuff like that. But if, let's, if the, the danger of having that open, and I'm not opposed against it, but is having people standing three deep at the bar. And I don't think we want that. So, you know, let's have a condition, how many stools there will be a maximum and there'll be no standees at the bar and everything else is table service. So we know how much is, I mean, we're still unclear about what the capacity is there. But the, the, the open window could cause problems like that of being, you know, say they take all the tables away and it's standing and everybody walks up to the bar. There's no more tables and it's just a bar area of everybody standing. And that, I, I don't think that'll be good for the community.
Hi, this is Rick. You know, Capital Line has kind of that same setup in, in front of their restaurant and they sit at the counter, the window counter, but it's, they're served by a server. They're, they don't order from, you know, it's not, you can't walk up and order a drink or anything from the counter. Like you have to be seated there and you order your food and your drink is brought. So I mean, I definitely agree with you that it should be a more set kind of process and not just, you know, randomly walk up and order cocktails from, from the counter. It should be a seating area and, or the servers can collect what they're serving to serve to the, the tables within that seated area.
Okay.
So I, I would agree, you know, with all those conditions. No, no, you know, no walk up service, but also I think there was some talk about when the, the windows would be closed. And I would propose that there's a condition that it closes at 10:00 PM every night regardless of entertainment. So that's just my thought on the matter.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Good joke.
Anyone else, any other comments or concerns or issues?
I'm just going back to what Ms. Bennett said and I, you know, I feel her pain. I've been around loud places and I just wonder, that's a major intersection of the downtown restaurant scene. And I just wonder why there isn't a police presence there throughout those busy Saturday, Friday, Saturday nights where what she's talking about might be occurring. I mean, I can't imagine why she has to call the police. I would think the police would already station someone there just because it's like a crowded area. Does, you know, I don't know if that's our deal, but I'm just asking, to me, that would just make the most sense. If they're getting called every Friday, Saturday night, why wouldn't they just have a policeman stationed there?
Are you suggesting that that's a condition that they hire or that they hire?
Not that they hire, that that City of Asbury Park, if they have people, if they have people that are, you know, fighting, drunken behavior, if that's all going on, and I don't doubt that it does, why wouldn't they just have a police presence there as a general, you know, state of, you know, what we do in our city? I know they have police presence in other areas of town.
There is a police presence in the area. They may not be stationed directly in front of the alehouse. So when they're called, they're called, they're already there in the central business district. And the other thing that the city does depending on how many complaints we get about a press, a particular establishment is we put restrictions on their liquor license that they have to hire X number of of security or they can't over serve or they can only serve in smaller cups, et cetera. So there are restrictions. The city is aware of the issues and the holes that the alehouse gets.
What's the number of calls? Like what's the, the criteria? How, how many elicits, restrictions?
I mean, I think this is all good conversation, but I'm not sure it's relevant to the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to go too far afield on policing issues. Yeah, I, I don't mind a little bit, but that's not what we do. Yeah, but I understand the concerns of the neighbors and I assume the, the owner does as well.
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Okay, for the, if I may, maybe if I can start discussing some conditions if the board.
Well, I have, this is Rick. I have another question. In the planner's report, there's a section with variances that lists a number of variances and that's, nothing was really discussed about that with the applicant or, or anything.
Donna, if I may, Donna, are you there? You're muted. Oh, there you are.
I'm muting.
Donna, based on the testimony, are some of the variants, has some of the variance relief been addressed?
No, I mean, Andy basically said none of it applies because it's not the original historic.
No, no, that's not my question. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you.
There was no planning testimony. The architect described what he's doing. I asked him why he didn't do something else and he said, you know, he told the rationale for using the overhead as opposed to the sliding or bypass to keep the verticality. But I haven't heard anything that, you know, qualifies as variance testimony.
Well, if the windows, if the windows that are, the, the glass that's being proposed is similar in texture, color and design, does that have any effect on these variances?
The point is that the, the style of the, the relationship of the windows to the structure. So it's got this vertical alignment of the individual windows and those actual structural bays of the building.
Okay.
That's what's called out in the, you know, in the registration form describing the building. So when they change the window format to these horizontal panels, it's in contrast and conflict with the verticality. So we wanted to understand why that is. And, you know, again, following the C2, the flexibility, we need something other than, because that's what's easy for us.
Well, if I can address that, this is not variance relief. I don't know how many times I said it. When you look at the code, all right, and you look at the redevelopment plan, number one, basic municipal land use law is when you set up a municipal land use law of a development statute, it's set up into a number of different areas. One of them is zoning. And if you're looking for variance relief, the variance relief that you're looking for has to be set forth as one of the zoning criteria.
No, 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 no.
Let me, Donna, please, let me finish, please. Let me, let me.
No, 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 no. Stop it, Donna. Let him finish and you'll respond. Okay?
When you look at the way the code was set up here in Asbury Park, you have a specific section for zoning. And it has in there bulk standards. You have a separate section for your site plan review here in Asbury Park and that has design criteria. And the case law is very, very clear. The appellate division has clearly stated numerous times, if it's not under the zoning part of the statute, then it is design exceptions. If it's under the site plan part, then it's a design exception or a waiver. The way it's set up in Asbury Park is all your design criteria is set up under the site plan part of your statute. We're dealing with the redevelopment plan here. However, when you look at your redevelopment plan, you don't just completely exclude your municipal land use law. They actually work in concert with one another. When you read here, your redevelopment law, it has in there a section that says the plan supersedes the use bulk and design standards of the city's land redevelopment regulations. It separates the three, the use, bulk and design standards. As I indicated, your design standards under municipal land use law are under a separate section. They're not under zoning. When you're in the redevelopment area, the way we set up our redevelopment plan here in the CBD, you have C variance relief that can be granted. You can't get D variance relief because you need a plan amendment in order to do that. But you can get design waivers and design exceptions. In fact, you have a separate section in here that says design guidelines, which is consistent with exactly the way your land use law is established here in Asbury Park in a separate section precisely. When you look at page 14 of the municipal land use law, it actually says in there, the UEZ design guidelines were created, which are currently used and evaluated any facade improvements in the CBD. These guidelines are referenced in the redevelopment plan are consistent with the goals and objectives of this plan. You use the guidelines to evaluate what you're going to do with regard to design. They're net set criteria. In fact, when you go through the design guidelines, a lot of it's subjective. And if it's subjective, they're not under the zoning code. Subjective design standards are not designed for variance relief. And a lot of the standards that you have aren't standards, they're criteria that you're supposed to evaluate as to whether or not they apply. More than that, you're supposed to have a UEZ design committee. And the purpose of the UEZ design committee, when you actually read your redevelopment plan and it says, UEZ facade committee will examine each submittal's exterior site design for aesthetic value. Well, that's what you're looking to do is see what the value is and it's, and it says at an evaluation of the submittal. So it's not as though it's whether or not they comply with any particularly set standards. It's a subjective review as to whether or not this is something that the board is looking to do. So it's not variance relief. It's not C1, it's not C2, it's design waivers based upon your UEZ guidelines. Now, your UEZ guidelines takes a look at what has been there. All right, your historic buildings, we've gone through this already about your historic buildings. This is not a historic element of a building. These windows had previously been replaced as part of a site plan. So there's nothing historic about the facades or the storefronts that you have on this building. So what you're not looking at is see whether or not it's within the historic character of the building. And number two, within the report, it says, well, is this what the historic purpose of the building? The purpose of the building was a department store. It's been, it was vacated, it was vacant, it was boarded up for God knows how many years. 2004, we obtained approvals to redo this building. You have restaurants in there. That's not part of your historic purpose of this building. You have a million and one different uses within the building. You have condos up top, not part of the historic purpose. It's an evolution of this building. So the way you look at it, the way you evaluate is not this set, you know, set in concrete type evaluation. That's why it's not C variance. The code that you have, the municipal land use law that you have, the way it's been segregated, the way the redevelopment plan has been established, this is not C variance relief. For 20 years that I've been coming before this board with regards to these applications, or 18 years, we've never looked at the redevelopment plan and set up design standards that C variance for 18 years, we've never done it that way. It's always been design waivers.
Donna, you're up.
Mr. Karas, you've argued the complete opposite for 649 Madison in front of this board about variances and waivers.
No, I didn't. I said it's not a variance relief.
Let, you had your turn. I wouldn't let her interrupt you.
Under the guidance of the Director of Planning and Redevelopment, that deviations from the design standards are to be treated as variances because the CBD, pardon me, redevelopment plan doesn't have a provision for design exceptions, only variances. So I haven't taken great issue with the use because I know it has an approval for being renovated from being a department store to being a mixed use commercial building. But the reason you're at the board is because the change in the windows is triggering a deviation from the standards. And the thing that's of great importance under those standards is the style of the windows. I know the windows are not historic. They don't look historic, but they're old. Even the guidelines say when something is old, if not historic, may still have value and you may still have to restore it in kind. All we're asking is you maintain the vertical elements. That's what we think you have a problem with, with this application. That's why our report calls it out that way. It's a variance and it's related to the verticality of the design of the windows because it's in con, it's contrary to the design of the building and the rhythm of the fenestration of the building. That's our whole problem.
Where does it say within the redevelopment plan that has to be vertical?
You, let me interrupt. You guys are never going to agree this evening on either side. I've heard this before. I'm hearing it again. You're not going to agree and I respect Donna's opinion. Let's see if we can deal with this in a, in a very practical way, Mr. Chairman.
Hopefully it is the board's decision.
Exactly. That's why I am going to address the chairman.
Then that's great.
Okay, all right. Standards for both variances and the standards for design exceptions are very similar, except that if it's a design exception, the applicant does not have to prove the second half of the testimony, positive testimony. Excuse me? Donna?
They don't have to prove the negative.
Oh, negative. I'm sorry. I, I, I've been a land use attorney for 45 years and still can't get them right. I know the difference and I know which ones we're talking about, the second half, but the hardship is always the same. Let's look, let's look at what was done here. The applicants, did you, do you find whether or not the applicant's architect justified the change in, in what, what they're looking for? Do you feel under the facts that they, they can't practically, it's a hardship for them to make the windows go vertical as opposed to this horizontal scheme? And the architect testified, it's a matter of whether or not you believe him or not. Okay? That's really it. And then, and then the, the, the other half of the testimony, whether or not it's, is it a substantial deviation? That's entirely up to you, but typically the board focuses in on what's the hardship, if any, to the applicant. Okay? So you have to decide if with conditions, you're satisfied that the applicant should get the relief that they're, they're requesting. Or if you're not satisfied that you still want Or if you're not satisfied, that you still want the vertical approach to the windows to be consistent with what was there before. You have to decide, that's the, that's the primary issue. Because the verticality, as I understand Donna, is the same. It's, we're arguing whether it's a variance, whether it's a design exception. We're going to be here until tomorrow because Andy's not going to agree, and Donna's not going to agree with Andy.
If I can ask Donna a question about the verticality. So Donna, if they matched, I guess your objection is because we have smaller windows, right? You have horizontal elements. Does the verticality get any better if the top and bottom panels match the vertical lines?
No, because it's the entire facade. So now you actually increase the deviation because you're changing that whole storefront bay from what's above it and what's on either side of it. So the whole building has these, you know, vertical bays with the vertical windows within. So when you change one block to horizontal, you know, that's, that's the deviation.
Oh, excuse me, this is Rick. So what we're charged with is determining whether or not we feel, whether or not the board feels that the design proposed by the architect is an acceptable deviation from the current design of that facade? Is that what you're saying, Jack or Donna?
That's it, that's the issue that Donna's raised. And it's a serious, it's an important.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I understand where she's coming from with that. I, I think, this is just my opinion, but the use is completely different than what the building was designed for when it was built. And I feel like if the change is made to kind of at least establish some verticality with the proposed overhead door and the panels above and below, to at least give that rhythm of the new design, that I personally don't have a problem with it. I know it's different, but I think it is acceptable for the use that's in that building. And it, there, you know, it makes sense. So I personally don't have a problem with it.
This is Eric Gallapo speaking. I tend to agree with you, Rick, that it's not so much the use that's a problem. And while the building has undergone some significant modifications, it would be nice if this could be looked at as an opportunity for some restorative qualities that bring some harmony between this new use, the, as a, as a sort of indoor-outdoor bar seating area into more harmony with the existing facade. And in particular, I believe that single bay of the Steinbeck Building is the original part of the building. Is that correct, Donna? And the rest is an addition? So there's some architectural inconsistencies between the two halves. But anyway, I.
You're muted, Donna. Donna, you're muted.
Sorry, yes, I was just agreeing with Eric, yeah. Because the building.
It was built in two pieces.
Years.
Yeah.
But I guess the westernmost piece of it is the oldest piece.
Right. So I guess, you know, I like the idea that the street and the sidewalk can become a place that has this, you know, kind of activity. I would love to see, I agree with Mr. Shanameo, that putting some limitation on the intensity of that use might be a good kind of balance against, you know, the change, changing, it's not changing the use. It's sort of like upgrading the use or whatever you want to call it. So I think limiting the number of people who can sit at that bar or limiting it only to table service and no standing room service and no direct service, whatever it is, I think those are all great suggestions. And I'll leave it to the rest of the board to decide what the right ones are. But it would be nice if we could see at least what are the other response, what are the other architectural and design responses to this use being modified in that location?
Yeah, sure.
I want to, I want to do testimony, I don't want to plead or anything, but.
No, 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 okay, well, all right, just let's not jump too far off the boat here.
I mean, I just looked at pictures, again, of the whole building. You know, you get, you get double hung, I mean, all sides have all, I don't really see the verticality. I mean, I know what you're talking about, maybe on the second floor, you know, the windows are sort of like in three sections, vertical. But I mean, then you start getting arched windows up above that are offset. I mean, again, I think if we, I would like to see if they do the top and bottom panels to match the, that's not mismatched with the garage door. You know, it might look a little better, but otherwise I don't have a problem.
What about the continuity with the other windows facing the street? If they're all the same, and then this one is going to be completely different?
This facade faces a completely different direction than all the other ones. They all face Asbury, I mean, Clickman Avenue, while this kind of faces the.
The corner.
It's still facing Clickman Avenue.
Sure.
But.
You're muted, Donna.
So this is just my opinion, but I think, given kind of the argument for both sides, the original design, kind of, if we are going to allow a window, in my mind, the original design makes the most sense because it would retain kind of the vertical elements on the top and bottom. That middle will have the horizontal elements. But if you look right next door to where this is proposed, you have the entrance to the building, and there's actually a transom with a horizontal element right next to it. So I don't think it's that inconsistent with, with that entrance, you know what I mean?
As proposed, Michael, or?
As originally proposed, yeah.
By the applicant?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I understand so everybody else understands.
Just my.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, I was.
Yeah, no, it's fine. You seem to have received a number of opinions from the board. You know, you're going to vote on this thing. I think, first, I know you need conditions. I can outline what I've written down, and then you can tell me as collectively what you think of those.
Okay, let's start there.
Okay, first of all, the capacity should be, we should note in the conditions that the capacity has to be limited to the A B C requirements or regulations, as Mr. Karas indicated, and applicable city ordinances, that the security in the area should be maintained, at the very least. There, no live music to be inside when the window is open at all, as opposed to timing. I have the top panel and the bottom panel to conform to the proposed door, as been indicated. That's entirely up to you. And we have to come up with a stool limitation as to how many, how many patrons you would want sitting at that window. And we would include that there will be no standees behind there. You know, you don't want, you don't want ten deep there, I get that.
You don't want standees in that entire area.
Right, right, I got that. And a window is to close no later than ten P M every evening.
I think the requirement for the standees is that they, they can't, there's not walk up service to the counter, like you have to be seated.
You figure, I think, here's a recommendation, bars, okay? You've got a service area that's usually had those brass or steel bars there where you serve the drinks, the server can get the drinks. You only have X amount of feet left, and how many stools can you fit in X amount of feet where people can comfortably sit and come to a number?
Yeah, but we don't, for instance, you don't want tables, Rick. You don't want tables taken out of the place, and then you just have all standees, you know?
No, I get that. I'm just talking, you don't want any standees, that's correct. I'll put that in the conditions. But you wanted to limit how many stools would be at the bar so you don't have that turning into a mess, a mess. So you come up with the number based on the footage that you have there and what you, you know, what can reasonably be put there. There are no standees, you still have people sitting at tables. So, you know, and so that's just what I have.
Well, we need, you know, you need like an, I guess you need an architect or somebody knows how much space.
Yeah, I don't know that we have the capacity to. So I mean, could there be just, so the applicant has indicated that he perceives that servers would put the plates there for the people that are seated outside. So an area of the counter would be designated as kind of the servers area, and then the remaining part would just be seating for people that are eating at the bar and are at the counter. And so there's really no location that people could just walk up and order drinks? I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid.
I would think that the operator would know the standard width of a bar stool. You calculate, after you take out the service area, you calculate how many bar stools can fit at that. And that's what you're limited to. I don't think it's really.
What was the full, what was the full length of the counter?
Fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet?
Is that correct, Mr. Karas? Fourteen feet? The width?
That's correct, I asked for it to be put on the record.
Yes, the mayor asked that question. So if you need three feet for a service area, you got eleven feet left, and how many seats can comfortably be put in there?
How do we write that?
Not packing room or anything else like that?
How is that, how is that, the language is.
It's easy, as long as, as long as we could just get an answer from Mr. Karas, perhaps he could ask his client, what's the width of a standard bar stool that they would use in that location?
All right, let me find that.
That'd be twenty four inches, I mean, the width.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually a bar stool, it's around eighteen inches.
Eighteen to twenty four inches.
Matt, can you, why don't you go unmute? What's the width of a bar stool?
Ones outside are eighteen inches.
Eighteen, okay.
Okay, so that's a foot and a half. You've got basically eleven.
Elbow home, plus elbow home.
Yeah, so and you need a little space.
Five seats.
In there. So if you can put, what, five stools?
Five stools, yes.
So then the five stools.
Make it five.
Okay, and so then the development drawings, that should be indicated specifically in the drawings, like showing where the service area is versus where seating should be? Is that something that we should?
You can have them submit a revised plan, subject to compliance with this condition.
Okay.
There's no reason to come back as long as there's.
No, no, I don't, I didn't.
You got five stools, no standees, and you've got your standard patio area that is permitted under the city regs and A B C regs.
Okay. And going back to that vertical element issue. So I think there's agreement with the board, and the board can correct me if I'm wrong, but we kind of feel that the panels above and below should align with the vertical elements in the overhead door so that it's continuity of the vertical elements all the way up. Is that correct?
Yeah, for me, yes.
Any other board members, any, and they agree with that, disagree with that?
I thought they agreed to that an hour ago.
No, that's what I'm trying to get.
It came back up.
I'm trying to get to that, trying to get to that. Anybody else have, are the rest of the board members okay with that condition?
I'm fine with that condition.
Jennifer? A thumbs up? Okay, okay, Juanita. Eric? Yvonne?
Anybody?
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds like you got more than a majority that.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure they were clear on that.
Yeah, to conform to the door, okay. All right, and that's, and that's your, and how I, how I craft relief, whether it's variance or design exception, I'll take care of that.
Okay, now, my other, my other, I don't know if it's an issue or concern, is we have the planning report as a document as part of this application. Does there need to be, whatever decision you come up with versus variance or design exception, does that need to be changed in the report so that?
No. No, it's okay.
Okay.
No, no, Donna, that's Donna's opinion. I wouldn't tell her to change it at all, that's.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we were, all bases were covered.
No, I'm covered with that.
Okay. Is there any other?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay, I just wondered if there were any other conditions that we had not mentioned that the board wanted to include? That we've covered everything? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move. Hold on, one second.
I have a motion by Daniel Scanameo.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Michael Manzella.
And this is with the conditions that I have outlined?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
What am I agreeing to, I'm sorry?
The approval of the project that's proposed with these seven or eight conditions.
No.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Soder?
Yes.
Eric Gallapo?
I think that, Eric, we need.
Sorry, I'm having trouble unmuting, yes.
We can hear you, thank you, Eric. Daniel Scanameo?
Yes.
Juanita, can Juanita vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we have enough. Ms. Barnes, I'm sorry, how do you vote?
You're muted, Juanita.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you restate the question, please?
Your vote on the, on the motion with the conditions.
Okay, on whether we are going to allow this to go on as it's been presented?
Yes.
Okay, proposed with the vertical windows?
No, horizontal windows with the conditions.
It'll be the same windows that were proposed? I'm going to say no.
Yes, and they're going to change the top and bottom, above that and below that to conform as per Daniel's recommendation.
I'm going to go with no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
All right, I have.
Six in favor, two against.
Yes, correct, six in favor, two against, application approved with conditions as discussed.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Before we go, I would just like to say that this is Mike Manzella's last meeting with us. People that don't know, he's leaving to go to Jersey City. And just want to thank him for his service for the, on the planning board and all that he's done for Asbury Park. He's made a tremendous impact on the city, and he will be greatly missed. We just want to thank him for everything.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
On behalf of all the developers, everybody, it's been an absolute pleasure to have on the board.
Thank you, it's been, it's been a pleasure to serve with all of you and to serve this city. Thank you, truly appreciate it.
Good luck, Mike.
Thanks.
Can I get a motion to close?
And I'm sorry, Rick, before we do, I'm just going to put the next meeting information up on the screen for, for everyone's information. The next planning board meeting will be a regular planning board meeting on March twenty first, two thousand twenty two. It will be a virtual meeting. You can go to joinzoom.us and enter the meeting ID eight two zero zero three two four seven six six four, passcode three four six two two seven. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, now can I get a motion to close?
Yes.
I'll move, I'll move.
Okay, I have a motion by Daniel Scanameo and a second by Rick Lambert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.